As a premier community in Hampton Roads, James City County strives to maintain a high quality of life for all citizens through sound fiscal management and legislative actions. In an ongoing effort to increase transparency, your Board of Supervisors holds public meetings to garner citizen input before making important decisions. Here is tonight's meeting agenda.
Evening, I'd like to call to order the meeting of the James City Service Authority Board of Directors. Carter and Mr. Powell, would you call the role, please?
Mr. Hippel.
Here.
Ms. Larson.
Here.
Ms. McGlinnan.
Here.
Ms. Rice-Naur.
And Ms. Knoll.
Aye, here. Any public comment tonight, sir?
We do have one speaker card, Ms. Linda Rice.
Okay, it's Rice.
Hi, good evening. I was going to say Board of Supervisors, but Board of Directors. My name is Linda Rice, I reside at 2394 Forge Road. The purpose of my comment this late afternoon-evening relates to a case you're going to be hearing very soon. It's in regard to the amendment in order to have a connection, or to be, I guess you would say, avoid the requirement for a connection to the PSA by the Payne family, who owns about 50 acres of property off of Forge Road, and it's currently zoned A1. So the reason I'm here tonight is not to object to the amendment, because I know that is going to pass. However, what I wanted to express was the concern of a number of our neighbors on Forge Road about where that amendment might lead. And of course, as you guys know, it's leading most likely to a rezoning. And that's the source of some of our concern, in terms of the nature of the number of lots that could be placed on that property as a result of the rezoning. I believe the rezoning being proposed is R6. And then also, possibly, the action being taken by the Paines, if necessary, to perhaps, if they get that rezoning, to sell that property off to a developer, and then to have a higher density, let's say, than what I think would be acceptable to many of us who live on Forge Road. It is, as I've said many times, the most beautiful road in James City County, and one of the reasons for that is because of all the good work that many of you here have done over the years. And so, in that regard, I would just like to say, as this case moves forward, I would hope that all of you sitting on the board would do what I would call really due diligence in reviewing the eventual master plan for the use of that property. Thank you.
Tonight's consent calendar, we have the following items: formal acceptance of water and sewer systems fiscal year 2025, and minutes adoption.
Oh, I'll move the consent agenda.
Mr. Hippel.
Aye.
Ms. Larson.
Aye.
Ms. McGlinnan.
Aye.
Ms. Rice-Naur.
Aye.
And Ms. Knoll.
Aye. Public hearings tonight, budget amendment, grant funding for Lake Tohano Estates water main replacement. So, Mr. Powell, are you going to give a presentation?
Yes, at your last meeting, you amended the fiscal year '25 budget by appropriating the $2.49 million grant that we received from the EPA for water and sewer improvements, and you also approved the construction contract for the Lake Tohano Water Main Replacement Project. We had initially thought that this project would take place in fiscal year '26, and we had budgeted $1 million in the FY '26 budget for this project, but since it was accelerated and the approval occurred in fiscal year '25, we're now asking you to amend the fiscal year '26 budget by eliminating the $1 million that was initially budgeted for this project in the fiscal year '26 budget. So staff recommends approval of the resolution. I'll answer any questions you might have.
Budget amendment?
We do need to have a public hearing.
Need to have a public hearing.
Yeah.
So we can open the public hearing, does anyone wish to speak? Okay, no speaking, close the public hearing.
Now I'll move the budget amendment.
Pardon me?
Now I'll move the budget amendment.
Mr. Hippel.
Aye.
Ms. Larson.
Aye.
Ms. McGlinnan.
Aye.
Ms. Rice-Naur.
Aye.
And Ms. Knoll.
Aye. Okay, next, board consideration. Contract award $168,332 for design services for Church Lane sanitary sewer replacement. Mr. Canning will be chief wastewater engineer, will give a staff presentation, please. Thank you, sir.
Agent, sanitary sewer infrastructure in the historic Tohano area requires a replacement to improve the reliability and level of service. The project consists of replacing approximately 3,200 feet of sanitary sewer main along Richmond Road, Church Lane, School Lane, and Chesapeake Avenue. The existing vetrified clay sanitary sewer gravity mains were installed in the 1950s and will be replaced with PVC. A request for proposals was solicited from qualified firms to provide engineering services for the design and construction of replacement of these mains. Staff deemed Kimberly Horn &amp; Associates as the most qualified firm that best met JCSA needs as defined in the RFP. A contract price of $168,332 was negotiated for design services. Funding for 80% of the design costs is provided through a community grant from the United States Fire Rental Protection Agency to the JCSA. The remaining 20% of the construction cost available in the sewer is available in the sewer fund capital improvement budget. Staff recommends approval of the attached resolution awarding the $168,332 contract for design services for Church Lane sanitary sewer replacement to Kimberly Horn &amp; Associates, Inc. I'll answer any questions you may have.
Any discussion by the board?
I'll move the motion for the contract award for $168,332, design services for Church Lane sanitary sewer replacement.
All right, Mr. Hippel.
Aye.
Ms. Larson.
Aye.
Ms. McGlinnan.
Aye.
Ms. Rice-Naur.
Aye.
And Ms. Knoll.
Aye. And now we have a requirement to connect a minor subdivision. Mr. Powell, please give a staff presentation.
At your last meeting, the board provided guidance to modify the JCSA regulations regarding the requirement to connect for a minor subdivision by requiring a minor subdivision to only connect when it is within 1,000 feet of usable infrastructure. The attached resolution implements this modification and includes a definition of usable infrastructure as follows: "Any authority water main, sewer main, or facility not requiring any upgrade to accommodate the development as determined by authority engineering. Upgrades may include, but are not limited to, changes in size, material, equipment, horizontal location, or vertical location." I want to emphasize that this proposed change only applies to minor subdivisions. Any major subdivision would still be required to connect, any major subdivision within the PSA would still be required to connect in all circumstances. Staff recommends approval of the resolution.
Questions?
How many minor subdivisions will this affect, possibly?
We did an analysis, and while I can't say the analysis is absolutely precise, we think it's very limited. We think this only is going to potentially apply to five other parcels in the PSA.
Pardon me, I would note that the requirement to connect as it currently exists would preclude the pains from even by right subdivision, because a by right subdivision from one to two lots, which can be done in the A1, would generate the requirement to connect as it currently is. I felt that, I think it was eminently unfair to somebody to affect them that way. I will point out, though, that, to address some of the concerns, that ultimately, when a rezoning is maybe put in on this, it would, again, have to come to the board. And anything beyond the by right of two lots would have to come to the board, and it could be made effective whatever is approved, if approved, it could be made fairly stringently controlled by a master plan, so that I think that can address some of the concerns about it being sold to somebody else for development, in that that master plan goes with the land even after it's sold. So I think there's some good valid concerns that have been raised, I'm glad people are paying attention and looking at it, but I think that as this progresses, we will give it a very, very thorough review. Just as another point, Mr. Powell, you indicated that there were a small number of other properties that might be impacted by it, but that in my review of it, it seemed like some of those really were not realistic in any...
I do think that's true, yeah, I think there were a couple of them that even though they would technically avoid the requirement to connect, there's very limited development potential for other reasons on those parcels, so yes.
I'll move the motion for the requirement to connect minor subdivision.
Mr. Hippel.
Aye.
Ms. Larson.
Aye.
Ms. McGlinnan.
Aye.
Ms. Rice-Naur.
Aye.
And Ms. Knoll.
Aye. Board request and directives, any comments?
I just have one question, if you could comment, Mr. Powell. It looked as if the TAP fees, both water and sewer, were down compared to budget expectations. Is that just a result of slowdown in construction?
Ms. McGlinnan, I'll take another look at that. I actually think we're ahead of what we budgeted for this year. I'll take another look. We have been below projections the last couple of years, and so we did reduce our budget estimates pretty significantly for this year, but I thought we had met those projections. But I'll take another look and comment.
The other question is, have they, they still haven't gotten rid of the little barriers on the bridge.
Okay, okay.
It looks like everything else is picked up and gone.
Yeah, I will follow up.
They just left that behind, so I don't...
Yeah, they did say the end of June, so I'll follow up with them.
Appreciate that.
Sure.
Mr. Powell, do you have a general manager's update?
Only thing is, I just wanted to remind you that the JCSA quarterly staff event is tomorrow at 11 o'clock. If any of you can join us, that would be great.
Motion to adjourn till 5:00 PM on September 9th for the regular meeting?
Motion.
Ms. Knoll, I'm sorry, Mr. Hippel.
Aye.
Ms. Larson.
Aye.
Ms. McGlinnan.
Aye.
Ms. Rice-Naur.
Aye.
And Ms. Knoll.
Aye.
All right, thank you.
I'll call to order this meeting of the James City County Board of Supervisors for a regular meeting. Mr. Reinheimer, would you please call the role?
Sir, Mr. Hippel.
Here.
Mr. Hippel represents the Powhatan District. Ms. Knoll.
Present.
Ms. Knoll represents the Stonehouse District. Ms. Larson.
Here.
Ms. Larson represents the Berkeley District. Mr. McGlinnan.
Here.
Mr. McGlinnan represents the Roberts District and is vice chair of the board. Mr. Rice-Naur.
Here.
Mr. Rice-Naur represents the Jamestown District and is chair of the board. Sitting to my left is Adam Kinsman, county attorney. I'm Brad Reinheimer, Assistant County Administrator, and I'm pleased to be filling in for Mr. Stevens this evening to serve as clerk to the board.
Okay, we will normally have a moment of silence and pledge of allegiance, and we don't have a designated pledge of allegiance pledge leader tonight, so I have asked Ms. Peg Borman to fill in, and she's graciously accepted. So Peg, if you would give us a few moments of silence and then lead us in the pledge.
Salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to what you say, I am saying, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Peg, give you a pen, but I know you've already got it. Selling those on eBay. Okay, our next, on our agenda is a public comment, and we have several speakers tonight. Our first speaker is Mr. Wayne Nun. Would remind folks when they come up that you please state your name and address for the record, and you have five minutes, the timer will show you the lights. Is Mr. Wayne Nun here? He's not here, okay, we'll set that aside. Next is Ryan Bonney.
Okay, very good. I'm Ryan Bonney, I live at 1714 Skiff's Creek Circle. I am a father and a husband, business owner, president of my community's HOA, a member of GroveConnections.com, and I'm proud to call the Grove my home for about 15 years. I want to first say thank you very much for the much-needed Grove Park. We would like a meeting to tell the county what we want in this park, and hopefully not be told by the county what's going to be in the park. Natural gas is currently working on Pocahontas. They left Capital Landing Road extremely bumpy and, you know, very aggravating to drive on that, I know that's outside of our area, but I just really want to make sure that they don't leave what was once smooth road, incredibly bumpy road right there. I also want to see if we can look in and request VDOT to make the speed limit 35 miles an hour through the Grove, like they enjoy in Tohano. On July 2nd, the James City County Planning Commission spoke about data processing centers. We are initially, of course, glad that things will now go through a specialty, special use permit, and that Steven Rogers of the Berkeley District stated of the insanity of these centers, which are, a lot of them are in Loudoun County. The safe level of noise is 70 decibels. HVAC fans in data centers generate noise levels ranging from 55 to 85 decibels, and can be heard for miles. This contributes to the loud humming and buzzing sounds people associated with these centers, and can go up when generators are being used and tested. What we are not pleased with is that the planning commission terms used in describing the Grove community, one of which is established communities. Data centers were immediately withdrawn from JCC zoning, areas called economic opportunity zones, because established communities were close. Grove was settled in 1618. Many of our communities predate the ones around EO zones by centuries and decades. It was also stated in this meeting that nobody lives down here, when talking about the Grove community of over 2,500 residents. In the Grove, we once had Log Cabin Beach, which was a thriving river access lost to sewage treatment. In 1972, we got ball aluminum, which you can hear and smell the processing going on today. In the late 90s, Colonial Williamsburg sold off Carter's Grove, and we lost most of, we lost the last of our river access to a private owner. We have 40 and 50-foot power lines, switching stations, all divide and cross our established community. Soon, we are getting additional sewage facility, along with a grease trap processing location. I can go on. I mention all of this because the word hysterical came up in reference to those against a data center. And not once did members of the Grove get hysterical about these wonderful other additions to our neighborhood I just mentioned. The people of the Grove demand and require respect. Lastly, the BASF plant should represent to everyone here, that is, the county's last opportunity for river access. Jamestown Beach is now packed fully. At opening, I have raced other fathers to get proper location at the beach. By 2040, JCC will have 50,000 new residents. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bonney. Next is Ms. Peg Borman.
Good afternoon, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the board. Mr. Reinheimer, Mr. Purse, Mr. Kinsman, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Peg Borman, I reside at 17 Settlers Lane in downtown Lightfoot. I'm here, once again, to talk a little bit about trash. And, you know, litter and trash are both unsightly along the roadways, or in and around a business. I hate those cigarette butts. Restaurants are wherever, where it might land, there's lots of people, I can complain about it, but what do they do about it? Some will pick it up, some maybe will put it in the trash can, and maybe they will clean it up somewhere if it's along the road, but more than likely, they'll just make their complaints and never, and it never gets resolved until I hear about it, or somebody else hears about it within the county. But I want to thank all of you out there that have actually tried to do something about this and volunteered and helped us over the years. And Clean County Commission came together on the 14th of June to honor Will Barnes, who was one of our volunteers, and we thank the volunteers who gave their time and their efforts to help us keep James City clean. It was a successful event on a really, really hot afternoon, and I didn't last the whole picnic, but anyway, I think each of you, I thank each and every one of you that came out to help us honor all those volunteers. And I know some of you on the board was able to be there, so I thank you all. Two young people who were both stewards of our environment were awarded scholarships for their achievements, and I'm so happy and very impressed with both of these future leaders of our community. Clean County will soon be awarding a business for their efforts at a breakfast forum later this month, and I hope some of you will be able to attend that, it's going to be in Newport News. But we try to do this every quarter for some business in the area. And later this year, we'll be holding our annual recycling expo and repair fair. And American Recycle Day is on November 15th, so we hope you will all be able to turn out to help us with this, to keep things out of the landfill by participating. Stay tuned, I'll give you more information later. Thank you for your time, and for allowing me to talk trash one more time.
Thank you, Ms. Borman. Okay, our next speaker is Stephen Maynes.
Good evening, I'm Stephen. I'm Stephen Maines, 3781 Captain Wind Drive, James City County in the Berkeley District. I'm speaking today to oppose the proposed government center and library complex, a project that appears to be moving forward despite growing public concern expressed on social media, at public meetings, and in your inboxes. You've stated this project aims to consolidate government services. However, at last week's town hall meeting, which I appreciate you holding, we learned that the consolidation is really not, no longer in the plan. Initially, we were told that Mounts Bay Road might be sold off to offset costs, but that too has changed to keep certain government activities here. This is because the proposed building is reportedly too small to accommodate current and county, current county government operations, let alone future growth. If employees remain at the current site, renovations will still be necessary here. So why is constructing a new, undersized facility preferable to renovating existing spaces? The rationale is unclear. You've noted this project has been in development for five years and suggested that recent public opposition is too little and too late to influence decisions. Well, I would point out that public engagement has surged due to significant concerns. Project costs have doubled in the last year. County received a 21% tax increase, and projections indicate 10% tax hikes every two years for the foreseeable future. These developments have understandably captured the community's attention, and they invite scrutiny. The library component raises further questions. Initially proposed as 50,000 square feet, $50 million facility, it's been scaled back to 25,000 square feet and $25 million with, quote, savings, it's not savings, but, quote, savings redirected to traffic improvements. When asked what features were cut to have the library's size and cost, county representatives yesterday denied that a $50 million proposal ever existed. This lack of transparency erodes public trust. When asked what library options had been considered, instead of building the new facility, it was clear from the library director and the architect that there were no other options considered. At last week's town hall, residents questioned why bonds were being issued through the Economic Development Authority at higher interest rates than direct county bonds, and the answer was clearly to bypass a voter referendum. If, as suggested, opposition is limited to a small group of malcontents, then why avoid a referendum? Call our bluff. Let the voters speak. The public is not confused. They clearly see rising taxes and unchecked spending. Finally, why is site preparation set to begin before project funding is fully approved? No responsible business would operate that way. As was indicated at the town hall, this project will proceed regardless of public input. This approach undermines good governance. I urge you to reconsider the options, establish clear decision-making go/no-go gates, and ensure that no irreversible work is conducted before a thorough public review. Thank you for your attention.
Next, Mr. Chris Henderson.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman. Chris Henderson, 101 Keystone. I had the opportunity to pick up your little flyer when I came in this evening, and it's very interesting that you're projecting that the county population is going to grow by 30% over the next 20 years. And if you're using Weldon Cooper as your source, they haven't been accurate for decades. They always overestimate county growth. And based upon the number of homes that we've been building, which is 200 to 300 per year, we will not reach 30% growth in 20 years. So I think that's, that's overstated. You also had this thing about improved customer service, delivery, and worker efficiency. The CEO of Ford Motor Company announced last week that he expects that the impacts of AI will result in the reduction of mid-level managers within, within Ford Motor Company of 50%. If the private sector is experiencing a 50% reduction in mid-level management, what's the impact going to be in James City County? So you say, well, we don't know. Well, Ford Motor Company thinks that those changes will be in place in three years. So by the time we finish building a big, beautiful mega complex that we don't need and can't afford, maybe half the mid-level management jobs and a portion of the inline jobs will no longer be necessary because of the impact of AI on the workplace and the workforce. So we need to be thinking about that, and we need to be smart. I would also point out that amongst the fiscal challenges for James City County, the White House announced yesterday that there will be $8 billion in cuts to education, of which James City County schools will lose $600,000. So the question lies, then, who is going to cover the $600,000 that was built into this year's budget that the White House just yanked? I'm looking at them, okay? So how does that impact your thinking? And how does that fit into the big picture of financial needs? Also of note, the national office vacancy rate just exceeded 20.6%. It's almost 30% in Williamsburg and James City County. Last month, when we met, I advised you that there was an auction that was coming up for a 6,700-square-foot office condo on McLaughlin Circle. Well, that office condo sold for $650,000, which is less than $100 a square foot, which was $250,000 less than its current assessment. So if that becomes the new standard for office space in James City County, well, then all of the values that you're expecting to increase are suddenly going to decrease because you base it upon comparable sale activity. So if you see a 25% reduction in value of your office stock, what does that mean for taxes? That means that taxes are going to go up in order to retain the same level of revenue. What does it mean for this complex? You've got all these rosy reports that somehow this complex is going to generate tens of millions of dollars and generate hundreds of jobs in the private sector. And I told you months ago that that's fantasy and that the real value of this property is land value minus demolition cost. I did have an opportunity to speak to the county administrator about whether or not this complex could be rehabilitated and utilized and expanded, and his response was, yes, we could do that. And I asked him then further, if we took the savings of the $14 to $19 million in debt service that this body wants to spend on a new complex, we could build out $19 million a year in new improvements and have no debt. We could do that annually, or we could say we're going to spend $50 million to build a new building and backfill some of these others and work within the existing budget rather than sacrificing the borrowing capacity of our county. I'd also ask whether or not anyone in the county had looked at the cost of separating from Williamsburg James City County schools. I've still never gotten an answer to that. I hope you're asking that same question. Thank you.
Next speaker is Susan Franz.
I'm Susan Franz. My address is 103 Cardinal Court, and I live in the Berkeley District. Tonight, I am here, first of all, I totally echo Mr. Henderson and Mr. Maines's comments. I'm going to focus on the library, the need for a third library tonight. First of all, I'd like to know what sort of studies did you conduct, if any, to determine that we actually need a new library in addition to the ones that already exist? On June 26th, a Williamsburg Watch article stated that according to the executive director of the library system, the third library is envisioned as the creativity and technology-focused branch of the Williamsburg Regional Library System. And I quote, in addition, this is what she said, "In addition to traditional collections, programs, and services available at all library branches, it will offer a range of creative spaces, both high-tech and low-tech, where users of all ages can engage in activities such as 3D printing, robotics, podcasting, digitizing media, and textile arts," unquote. I'm sorry, I fail to understand the need for these tech offerings. Why should taxpayer dollars be spent to provide rooms for podcasts? Textile arts are lovely, however, they can be learned in community classes and art schools. Why are these offerings necessary? Please convince me as to why these particular offerings are needed. They're nice to have services, but economically, it makes zero sense to me. Finally, in reading the chatter on Next Door Neighbor, which is kind of fun, one lady wrote in support of the third library with this following non sequitur argument. This is a quote from her. "I sometimes am on a waiting list for a book with as many as two or three dozen people ahead of me waiting their turn to read that book." That's her argument for a third library. I'm not sure, I'm just not sure why she thinks a third library would solve an inventory issue. I'm sure that the inventory of particular books could be increased at the libraries that already exist. Do not tell me that we need excessive demand for certain books. I hope you all understand you have awakened a sleeping giant in this community. The property tax increase was the beginning, and now the snowball keeps rolling, and it's getting bigger and bigger. The citizens in this community are not happy. They may not be able to show up and speak in a meeting, but because I knock doors for political campaigns, I get to hear what the citizens have to say, and I can assure you they're not happy. The citizens want honest answers and not explanations using financial shell games. Each of you were elected by constituents who believed you would act in the best interests of the community. At the moment, it appears you're failing at that job. The seal is not on the deal of any of these expensive projects yet. You can change course. Thank you.
Next speaker is Marilyn Olympe.
Ma'am, would you give us your, your name and address first?
Marilyn Olympe, 101 Sagamore. And you're right, Susan. I mean, anybody that I talked to who, when we discussed Williamsburg Regional Library, we're heartsick. We're so upset that we're thinking about, well, probably it's a done deal, I'm really late in the game, but the idea of not renovating rather than, I mean, demolishing rather than renovating. It's, when I moved to Williamsburg 15 years ago, the first thing I noticed was that library. I just fell in, and the train station, I love the train station too. And I just feel like the answer is demolish, and I know the library has problems older, but I would much rather see it renovated. And anybody that I have talked to, and there's a lot, I have so many friends that use the library, everyone feels the same way. That is the general consensus is, we're not looking to destroy this library and start with something brand new. Let's fix what we have, and I think you'll make the community like 100 times happier if you do that. That's all.
Thank you. And our last speaker is Karen Rollins.
Here last month, my name is Karen Rollins, 4481 Powhatan Crossing, and I live in Berkeley District. And I know I told you last month that you didn't give any reasons that make this new government center essential. Also, it destroys beautiful land, takes wildlife homes, brings more traffic, and it's going to raise our taxes. Since last month, I have been engaging people wherever I go, whether it be at the gym, and I'm in my gym clothes right now, sorry about that, whether it's with friends, whether it's walking my dogs, clubs I belong to, whatever it is, whether I'm shopping at Target or talking with a cashier. And I will say to people, are you aware they want to build a new government center? To a person, the answer is, really? No. What's this about? And so I tell them a bit, and they're like, well, no, they should renovate. All I can tell you, you need to put this to the citizens and let them vote. I'm tired of the Board of Supervisors just doing what they want to do. And you probably, you know, think, oh, there's going to be a bunch of people here against what we want. Okay, so you agree. This time, you vote against it, or this time, you two vote against it. But you always make certain that what you want passes. And I'll be back. Thank you so much.
And that's all of our public speakers for tonight. We move on to our consent agenda. Tonight's consent agenda consists of the following items: a grant award of $45,000, opioid abatement authority, kinship navigator program expansion, and may I have a motion to approve the consent calendar? Is anyone with to discuss it?
Motion.
Okay, we have a motion to approve. Mr. Reinheimer, call and roll, please. Mr. McGlinnan?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Ms. Noel?
Aye.
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Ms. Reisenhour?
Aye.
Okay. Public hearings are, it's not supposed to do that. I had it on stun. Public hearings tonight, our planning commission representative is Steve Rogers from the Berkeley District, so thank you for being, well, we'll call for, on you here in a, in a second. Our public hearing number one is the ordinance, ORD 25-0001, amendments to the zoning ordinance regarding sexually oriented businesses. And Kristi Parrish will give the staff a presentation. Thanks, Kristi.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. At its meeting on February 25th, 2025, an initiating resolution was adopted to consider possible amendments to the James City County zoning ordinance to define sexually oriented businesses and require that this use obtain a special use permit in certain districts. Currently, these uses are not identified in the ordinance. However, the sale of adult-themed bookstores, videos, books, videos, and novelties could be considered under the existing retail use, and other establishments could argue that they could be permitted as an indoor center of amusement or indoor theaters. The Code of Virginia allows localities to regulate, restrict, permit, and prohibit the use of lands, buildings, structures, and other premises. The United States Supreme Court recognizes that adult entertainment has first some, First Amendment protection as expressive conduct. Localities, however, can generally regulate these types of businesses under their zoning laws as long as the regulations serve as substantial government interest. However, an outright ban of sexually oriented businesses would likely fail a legal challenge. A neighboring locality recently adopted the amendment to their zoning ordinance to address this type of use. During their process, they collected an inventory of adult-themed businesses in the Tidewater area. These uses include adult entertainment venues, lingerie stores, novelty stores, adult bookstores, and adult video stores. This list was provided to you in your packet. Staff presented materials to the policy committee on April 24th, 2025. After discussion, the review of the commercial district statements of intent, the policy committee voted unanimously to recommend the following proposes to the planning commission: to amend the existing retail and retail store and shop definition to exclude sexually oriented businesses within Section 24-2 definitions; add a new definition for a sexually oriented business and related terms to Section 24-2; and add sexually oriented businesses as a special permitted use in the LB Limited Business, B1 General Business, and M1 Limited Business Industrial District. By requiring a special use permit, the planning commission and the Board of Supervisors will have the opportunity to consider the proposal and whether it would adversely affect the health, safety, or welfare of persons residing and working in the area or in the neighboring neighborhoods or impair the character of the district or adjacent districts. Staff presented the ordinance at its June 4th, 2025 meeting of the planning commission, and they unanimously voted seven to zero to recommend approval of these, these changes. Staff recommends the Board approve the ordinance changes as provided in the packet, and I'll be happy to answer anything, any questions you may have.
Anyone have any questions for Ms. Parrish? Okay. Now we'll have Planning Commissioner Rogers come up and give us the planning commission report on this.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, supervisors. Good evening. It's been a while since I've had a chance to come and speak with you, and let me start by saying, I should have shown these to Kristi first because she just saved you two pages of my notes here, but I can tell you that at our meeting, there was really just a lot of agreement across the board in support of the draft ordinance, the need for such a draft ordinance to get out ahead, you know, as opposed to react after businesses get in place. No pushback, we're aware- We're aware of some of the things that happened in our neighboring county, and they're getting up and also sharing their information with us. We looked at the audit, the types of materials that Kristi mentioned, and after discussion of that audit, we voted unanimously that yes, we should have definitely a revision, something that goes beyond the words retail store, to capture this particular type of activity. So even if it's allowed, it should be looked at and considered and put in a place that's conducive to it. And really, subject to questions, I don't have anything to add. We don't have any reservations with the draft that you all have. Any questions for me?
Questions for Mr. Rogers? Thank you. Appreciate the report. Okay. We will now open the public hearing, and I have one speaker, Mr. Chris Henderson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Chris Henderson, 101 Keystone. I have noticed, having an office building over in McCall Circle area, the proliferation of Oriental massage parlors. That is not a use that was included in the adult uses, but I can recall a recent article in the newspaper about police raids on Oriental massage parlors where there was prostitution and other types of illegal activities that were ongoing. And so you may want to consider having those uses being specially permitted so that you can assure yourselves that the operations are legitimate and that the operators are legitimate, and perhaps you could require some sort of insurance provision that the business is required to accept insurance as part of payment rather than cash for services. So I just bring that to your attention because I perceive that to be an adult use that could potentially impact other owners of office condos and buildings where they're adjacent to them and in shopping centers where those uses could lawfully go without any type of public input or control. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, no more speakers. We'll close the public hearing and look to the Board for discussion and our motion. Motion for approval? Okay. Any discussion? Mr. Reinheimer, please call a roll.
Sir? Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Mr. McGlinnan?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Ms. Knoll?
Aye.
Ms. Eisenhour?
Aye.
Our next public hearing is sale of a portion of property located at 186 Clark Lane. Mr. Vaughn Paul will give the staff presentation.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. Before you, this evening for your consideration is the sale of a portion of property located at 182 Clark Lane, I'm sorry, 186 Clark Lane. This is part of the larger parcel that was purchased as part of the Clark Lane subdivision development. This tail here was originally a stem for that larger parcel, and it doesn't really serve any purpose for our development. This is the concept for the subdivision that we're planning, and you can see up here in red is the subject parcel. It's not needed for open space where we, to maintain it, any future HOA would have to maintain that parcel. It's isolated. They would also have to carry insurance on it. The two residences that are adjacent to it have indicated interest and have offered a price to purchase it. We propose that we sell it and that they are going to split the proceeds of the sale between themselves, and so staff recommends approval.
Questions for Mr. Paul? Okay. Thanks. That picture cleared up a couple of questions for me right away, so thank you. I appreciate that. We have no Planning Commission report on this one, so if there are no questions for staff... Mr. Chairman, I'll move to approve the sale of the property. Mr. Chairman, you need to open the public hearing. Sorry about that. Open the public hearing, and I do have one speaker, Mr. Chris Henderson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Chris Henderson, 101 Keystone. I guess my bigger question is, is with regard to the proposed development, why is James City County in the residential development business, and how does that comport with the goals of the comprehensive plan and fiscal responsibility? Thank you.
Ready? Close the public hearing? Chairman, now I'll move the sale of the property. We have a motion, no discussion. Mr. Reinheimer, please call a roll.
Mr. McGlinnan?
Aye.
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Ms. Knoll?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Ms. Eisenhour?
Aye.
Okay. We are now down to number three, Dominion Solar Project Ground Lease Agreement. Mr. Andrew Dean will give the staff presentation.
Evening, members of the Board. Andrew Dean, Assistant County Attorney. At the direction of the Board, over the past several months, county staff have been discussing lease terms with Dominion Energy for the lease of approximately 60 to 80 acres of land located at the James City County Closed Landfill Site at 1206 Jolly Pond Road. The entire parcel of land owned by the county at 1206 Jolly Pond is approximately 545 acres, and it is zoned public land. A portion of the property is occupied by the closed landfill, and as such has limited uses. Dominion has expressed interest in placing a solar project on that property, which is a use that will be allowed pursuant to a special use permit granted by the Board. The map on your screen shows the property. As the Board is aware, James City County currently conducts various operations at the property, including the Jolly Pond Convenience Center and a police department shooting range. The parties understand that these operations would continue during the life of the lease, and that's Dominion's expectation. That's embodied in the lease agreement terms that we've been working on so far as well. The lease also contemplates reasonable growth in those operations, so there shouldn't be an issue there. The memo we provided you all, which you have in your packets, references a number of material terms of the lease that we've been working on so far. It includes details about the lease length and base rent. Just covering that sort of big picture, the lease does attempt to give Dominion some flexibility during the initial phases of the lease to determine the feasibility of the proposed use, while the county continues to have uninterrupted control of and use over the parcel. This relationship only changes if and when the special use permit is approved for the proposed use and a site plan is approved, at which point the parties would then progress to the later phases of the lease with greater specificity over that area which is being leased by Dominion. So during these later phases, Dominion would be, the area Dominion would be using for the project would be much more detailed and limited, and Dominion's rights would then look a lot more like standard rights of somebody leasing a parcel for these types of purposes. So really, two phases there. The initial phases is essentially what I'm describing. There's several phases throughout the lease, but the initial phases, it's our parcel we're allowing them on to conduct this due diligence, which is fairly common if you were, say, thinking about purchasing the property as a commercial buyer. They can do some inspections, they can do testing, and then only once that special use permit allowing this solar facility use is approved, if it's approved and pursuant to the site plan that's approved, would you have that final 60 to 80 or so acres where they're laying out exactly what that project site looks like. Once that happens, then ultimately you'd have this specificity over the area with which Dominion would be operating the facility, and we would obviously continue to use the rest of that 545-acre parcel. Staff recommends approval of the resolution granting the county administrator the authority to enter the lease. I'm happy to answer questions about where we're at in the lease negotiations and what kind of terms are currently in that. I also just will mention quickly, Dominion has two representatives here at this meeting as well, Willie Barton and Crystal Bright, and they're behind me in the audience.
Question, is this what we discussed about two years ago at a joint meeting of them putting a solar farm in there? And my understanding is when they were speaking to us, that it was going to be raised above the landfill?
Above the, so the...
It would be a raised up, you know, like when they talk about doing solar projects on roofs and things like that, my understanding when the gentleman spoke from Dominion Energy, he said, we would build it above the landfill so you'd still have complete use of the landfill, but the panels would be raised up. And I thought that was a great idea. I'm not thinking it is if they're going to all be on the ground.
Correct, Supervisor. So my understa, we don't have the plans and specifications for exactly how they would design it yet. That would be part of the process where we move to those separate phases and part of them getting the special use permit and ultimately the site plan approved. But what I would say is, in our discussions with Dominion so far, the idea is that you could use the capped area of the landfill to do this project because you're not interfering with that capped area of the landfill. What they would be doing would be building on top of that using sort of spread out, a more spread out structure that sits over the land on top of that. So it does create this use for this otherwise relatively unusable property because you couldn't burrow down through there and break the cap.
That's what I understood. So it didn't sound like that to me, and now, okay.
Yes, Supervisor.
Okay. So it's above what's there already.
Sitting on top.
Sitting on top. That's what I meant. That's what I meant, because he said it would be raised up. So it would be on top of what's already used.
Yes, Supervisor.
And not taking away any more use of the rest of the land, right?
Well, that's right. I mean, you know, it would be sitting on top of the land in a certain area, and I don't know that we'd be able to use the land that sits underneath those panels for other purposes, per se, but it would only be the limited area that we were talking about, the 60 to 80 to 90 acres or so, that ultimately they put forward the plan or the design plan for.
Thank you.
I think it's important to reemphasize that that land, the landfill is no longer in use. It's capped. It's not something we're continuing to use, but it would be a facility that would be above that. And I think that the next stage of it clearly is after they do their due diligence and identify exactly which pieces of parts of that process they want to do, that that's when we would come back and look at that detailed plans like you're talking about.
Yes.
Other questions?
I don't have any questions. I just am, I'm pleased to see us get to this point and appreciate the work that you're doing, that you've done, and I think it's a good use of the land and of the area. So I didn't have any questions, though. And just a shout out, because Crystal's here, who does an excellent job informing us of weather events, and I really appreciate it, much needed. And if we've learned anything this past week, it's important that we have good communication about the weather. So, thank you.
I appreciate that as well, Crystal. I do.
Anybody else? I was just going to ask, just so for clarification for the public, is that we're looking, I think, at what, a period for their due diligence of up to four years? Is that correct?
That's correct. So year zero to one, we'll call it, so start point to zero one, that's the feasibility term. The development term, I also kind of call that a due diligence period because the lease does contemplate that really they wouldn't have any additional authority out on the location. You know, it would be us who still own and operate everything out there, but they are continuing to develop their site plan, and they have access to the property to do destructing or invasive testing, potentially environmental testing, all through coordinating with us. So, yeah, I kind of call that feasibility and development.
And then, once we get past that point, when they decide they want to proceed with it, then that's when we come back to the Board with a SUP, and this lease agreement then continues on if we do that SUP, and the terms of the lease agreement are actually specified out for quite a lengthy time, I believe.
It could be as long as 44 years, yes. So that...
Yep. So what we're approving tonight is there's a lease agreement that basically has a lead-in, and then there'll be a decision point as to whether it gets built or not, and then after that, the lease would then operate for the rest of the time under the provisions of this lease.
That is correct.
Okay. Any other questions? I have, this is no Planning Commission report, no questions for staff. I'll open the public hearing, and we have one speaker, Mr. Chris Henderson.
I had an opportunity to review the terms of the lease, and I believe that the terms of the lease are substantially below market. So the money that's involved is insignificant in terms of the county. So what's the benefit to the county? Does the county get the electricity that's generated from the site at a reduced rate? Does it go to indigent people who live on Chico Hominy Road? Do they get benefit of the project? So, you know, I sit there and I read this stuff, and I was like, well, what's in it for us? You're going to get $60,000 a year. That's nothing. If you have a problem on that landfill and the DEQ requires you to open up cells and extract material, then you're going to owe Dominion Energy a lot of money because you're going to have to remove their equipment, you're going to have to displace the solar panels, you're going to have to remove the material, remediate, and then restore it. Why do we want that liability? The landfill is already liability enough. Why can't we make it into some sort of passive park? Go plant wildflowers, you know, do something that would be more beneficial than solar panels, which become hazardous waste when they're done, and we're going to have to dispose of them somehow, and they're not particularly efficient. I was listening to one of the leading energy analysts who says that by 2030, if we continue on this path of reliance on solar and wind, we will increase the likelihood of rolling brownouts and blackouts in all 50 states to 90%. That's stunning. We got to wake up. The future is not in solar and wind. We got to get in real power, radiable energy production in order to fuel our communities and this economy and the businesses that are coming. So I think this is a terrible idea, and I say pass. Thank you.
We have no more speakers. We'll close the public hearing and look to the Board for discussion and our motion.
I will move the resolution of the Dominion Solar Project Ground Lease Agreement.
With a discussion?
Great project. I think it'll give us a good opportunity to add to the desperately needed resources and energy that is being consumed by a lot of data centers and other development across the state.
Reinheimer, please call a roll.
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Ms. Knoll?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Mr. McGlinnan?
Aye.
Ms. Eisenhour?
Aye.
Okay. Board considerations, we have none tonight. Board requests and directives. Start with Mr. Hippel.
Oh, man, you put man a few words now.
I went to the grand opening ribbon cutting last week of Miss Tabitha Sewer, Sewer, S-E-W-E-R, Sewer Studio at the Outlet Center, and she actually got Emerging Entrepreneur of the Year Award from the Chamber of Commerce, and she has a beautiful store there. They teach sewing, crocheting, and all kinds of things, but the place is beautiful. So in one month, we've gotten two new projects in the outlets that are not outlet centers that are more geared to the people that live here, learning how to do things, and the cornhole place. So I'm kind of excited not to see empty storefronts, and her place is beautiful, next to the bookstore and Banana Republic. And that's it. Thank you.
So I just, we wanted, hope everybody had a happy Fourth, and of course, my thoughts and prayers are with the people in Texas. That was just a terrible tragedy, and as a place that has several summer camps in our area, it just, to know that children and adults lost their lives with little to no warning just because of the time of day, it's just been, that's very, very tough. I would urge people, it's great that people use Next Door Neighbor to communicate, but I would urge people, if they have comments that they would like to make, that they would send us an email. I think almost all of my colleagues respond to email, read email. Mr. Reinheimer has made himself available with full of information about the government center throughout this process. Every time that I've called with a question, Mr. Reinheimer has been very, have this citizen reach out to me. I'm happy to answer any questions. So I would urge people to reach out if they have questions, and sometimes you ask questions, you may not agree with the answer, but we will do our best to get you the answer. And I appreciated the gentleman coming from the Grove community. Also think that Mr. McGlinnan's done an excellent job of representing the Grove community, and it's also, but it's also very important, I think, to hear the concerns, and I'm glad we're getting a park there. The Grove, the Roberts District pays a great deal of our, the county business tax, a great deal of it comes from the Roberts District. great deal of it comes from the Roberts District. So I think it's, it's due time that we pay some of that back. So, thank you. Oh, and I would just mention that we leave on, well, I leave Thursday and we have, Ms. Knoll will be joining me and we have members of the administration that will be going to the National Association of County meeting in Philadelphia where I hope that they quickly solve their strike. Please.
Just, just a couple of quick things. First, thanks, Ms. Larson, for the comments about, about the Roberts District and Grove in particular. Grove is, is a community that has experienced a lot of pressures over the years. And now they are getting some significant investment by the county and state that I think will be very helpful. But we also need to recognize that there are disproportionate impacts on different areas that need to be understood and shared fairly. I also wanted to mention that I attended yesterday the first session, listening session at the library where information is, was presented on different aspects of the proposed library building as part of the government complex. And we're, about eighty people attended that session. Mr. Reinheimer was there and answering questions from the county's perspective. The library staff were there, friends of the library, and were in attendance, all presenting lots of useful information that would help to explain, for instance, about the value of having creator spaces, which has become very popular in libraries across the country and especially in our library where the challenge is that while having maker spaces available for 3D printing and other projects, the amount of space available to do that is really very limited. So I, I think that there's another opportunity tomorrow evening between four thirty and seven at the James City Recreation Center. If you'd like to go out and find out a little bit more about the plans for that library building and the concepts behind it, I encourage you to attend that and find out what is happening with that particular story. Two other quick items. One is about two weeks, two or three weeks ago, I noticed a rather significant flume of smoke coming from a neighbor's yard and discovered that, in fact, that they were using a flamethrower for weed control. And that has apparently become a fairly popular phenomenon in many parts of the country. But I did ask if, if that was permissible in residential zoning districts in James City County, and it is not, according to the fire marshal. So it is important for people to recognize that, especially in a place where we have often experienced drought, that not a very good idea to kind of try to deal with weeds in your yard or unwanted landscape plants through the use of flamethrowers. And it's, it's not actually legal in, in those zoning districts. And finally, just a gentle reminder to folks who are commenting about different things that it's not really helpful to the community at large to identify a particular kind of enterprise with a particular kind of ethnic nationality or other group. And so when we, when we talked about massage parlors, the term massage parlor doesn't need to have some kind of ethnic identifier associated with it. And I think it is important for us to recognize that kind of stereotyping really doesn't serve the community very well. And so I just wanted to encourage folks to think about that before they appear to speak before us.
Thank you for speaking up. You're right.
I have one ribbon cutting tomorrow in my district and fortunately I have a conflicting meeting, so Mr. McGlynn is going to step in. And it's ribbon cutting for Oceans and Ale, which is relocating over to the old Ruby Tuesdays out restaurant over near Publix. And it looks like they have a, a nice location, a big parking lot, and they can play cornhole outside without disturbing too many people, I think, there. So it probably is going to be a tremendous improvement for them and for their clientele. And unfortunately, I, I can't be there, but I think Mr. McGlynn said he would, he would hold down the fort on, on that one. The only other thing I would like to comment on very briefly is the library, some of the questions that were raised by public comment on the library. It's pretty clear in listening that there is a conception, a misconception, that we were talking about tearing down or destroying one library and building another. And in fact, when we looked, started this whole process, the library board was the ones that came to us, came to all the jurisdictions and said, we need additional space and our old space is really falling down. And the initial proposal was to put something like close to a seventy-five thousand square foot facility on the current site, which would mean tearing down after the police station was torn down, to build a huge building. And then there was going to be inadequate parking for it. And after much discussion, the decision was made that we would probably best be served by providing the additional space that the board needed by doing a renovation of a smaller library, about the size of the current one there in, in, in Williamsburg, that would be a new, new building because of the old one having real difficulty reaching pretty much the end of a service life. So the city has that in their plan to build that facility, I believe, on the site of the old police station, once the new police station is occupied. That will leave fairly reasonable parking for that facility, but it does not provide the additional space they needed. And that's where we have been looking for considerable length of time for site in the Newtown area to put an additional library to provide the space, the aggregate space for the combined regional library that would meet their needs. Unfortunately, if you look at their plans and how many square feet they need for population according to their, their study, we still are well behind in square footage. But I think they have done a wonderful job of utilizing what we've been able to offer them and put together a facility that will serve the needs of the community much greater. And I believe about eighty or eighty-five or eighty-nine percent of the people in this, the service is for, for James City County. The city of Williamsburg is a much smaller portion and even York County is a much smaller portion. It's great that we have a regional library, but I think that the idea of having this twenty-five thousand foot, square foot additional facility at our government complex will go a long way toward meeting the need of a lot of folks and it would provide considerably better parking. So those are the comments that I wanted to pass on. Mr. Chairman? Yes, sir.
May I make a few comments? I know I passed on it.
I don't know. I don't know. We'll, you have to turn a few chips in for that one.
Wasn't gonna, wasn't gonna say much, but you know, the, the comments, not only tonight, but lately, have had a ounce of truth and a pound of fake news. And you know, anybody can meet with Brad and go over anything with Assistant County Administrator, Brad there. They can meet with him and go over anything they need on this county complex, how many meetings we've had, where the money's going, what's happened with it, everything that's gone on. But when citizens get up here and know the truth and slant it for their like or whatever reasons they want, it's just pure wrong. I mean, it is just pure wrong. And I'm getting a little tired of the nonsense of bringing this stuff back and forth and trying to stir the citizens up. Any citizen that wants to know anything, please call the county. Please talk to Brad. Please ask the questions. We want to hear the questions. If you're concerned about something, we want to know that. But to sit there in a little group and huddle together and think they're going to stop something because they think they know more when they've just gotten into the game and they have all the information and they can learn anything they want to learn, but want to slant it to their fake news, might as well use some of that stuff. And you know, and then they, they write in there and talk about the Williamsburg Watch. Well, it's just like any other paper out there. If they were to put on there how well we work together, Democrat, Republican, Independent on this board, representing James City County, and how well our staff works, and remember, we were, when we got it, the smallest community in the United States with a triple, triple bond rating, means we're doing our job right. We're not doing it wrong. We're doing it right. And we're doing it for the citizens. We're not doing it for anything we're gaining. We're gaining nothing. It's for the citizens, to better the community. And then they put on there, well, I, I can't blame Williamsburg Watch that if they think they can get a little spot in there that they can pry a door open of some sort and get something stirred up. That's what papers are about. Papers are about to make it seem like nothing's going right and nothing's working for you the way it should. Instead, they should be looking at and going, you know, this is not a perfect board, but they work well together. This is not a perfect staff, but they care about the citizens and do everything they can in order to promote James City County and the citizens. Instead of getting up here and trying to trash your community. And I'll go back to the old school. If you don't like it and it's right and we're doing what we need to and you don't like it, the car that brought you to James City County can definitely take you right back out. And Michael Hippel said that. And I'm not scared to tell you that. We've got great citizens in James City County that want certain things and they want things to be right. And they've lived here their entire life and they're doing a great job. And then somebody wants to come in here and tell us, well, where I used to live and screwed all that up, and now I want to come here and tell you what you need to do here. Well, that don't work for me. And I'll tell you, if you don't like it, hell, drive back out. So I just, and I'm sure I'll get some comments on that, but I'm meeting the days, I really don't give a hoot on that. So that's just, I just wanted to bring those couple of comments. I got more. I'll live to rest.
Thank you, Michael. I appreciate it. I think we know how you feel.
Thank you.
We had our joint meeting Monday night, our town hall, and we had almost seventy people there. And it was real, it was very well done. Everybody was polite. Everybody was nice. Nobody called us any names. Everybody got along. So they can, but at least the people who were there got their answers. And that's, and that's, that's why we have them. That's why we do that stuff. You know, it's because if they had questions, Brad could answer them, everybody could answer them. And so people did write back to me and said, thank you for a nice meeting and thank you for the information. So we need to get more and more, I know we're out there, I know we're, we have meetings all the time and it's in the paper and it's everywhere and it's on the website, but people just don't stay informed.
Well, I, I appreciate the fact that your, your, your meeting went so well. I get a very good report on it about how that went. I would remind the public that one of the things that we want to do is when we do finally get a final design and a final contract price and everything on this, I think that info, with that information, I would like to see us go back out to do town halls with that prior to us taking a vote on, on this, so that we have the opportunity for maximum public participation of what it, the ultimate final plan and cost are going to be. So we'll look forward to that. We'll look forward to that with the reports to the county administrator now.
Well, I just wanted to, the Berkeley District will have a town hall on September fourth.
September fourth.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I may note that.
Sorry.
Okay.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Just one thing. I know it's been mentioned already, but I want to mention it again because it's very important. August fifth is National Night Out. It's a great opportunity for your communities to come out and meet with police officers and for the police officers to meet folks in the communities. It's a great event every year. It's always the first Tuesday in August. This year it is August fifth. If you're interested in signing up your community, please reach out to the police department. That's all I have.
And when you do that, you will be rotating around from community to community and so, as opposed, as opposed to what we did previously, which was holding it up at the.
Yeah, that was, I think, a one year off.
Yeah, okay.
Typically, we do go out into the neighborhoods and meet with the communities where they are. That's the plan for this year.
It was very nice last time I was at one in my, my area. We appreciate that.
I've been doing it the last five years, so it's always, because I volunteer with the police, but I did it last year, still volunteering with the police. And it's really fun to do and, and it's, it's fun to get out and see everybody and run around. It's kind of fun, so.
Could you give us an update on community? Because you know, for a long time, we had officers that were assigned to, I don't, I don't know that you would call them districts, but areas. And I don't, and I think that when we went through the period there where we were short-staffed, we got away from that. Can you get us an update on, is that happening? So if there's a neighborhood that wants to participate but has never participated, who they might contact for that?
Yeah, we, we did experience those manpower issues over the past couple of years. Some of the community policing officers were rotated out to patrol because that's where they were needed.
Right.
Since then, we've hired back some retired officers who are serving part-time in those community service positions.
Okay.
So if they call the two-five-three-eighteen-hundred number.
Okay.
They'll get them in touch with one of those officers. I don't believe they've assigned them by police zone. That's how we had it previously and I think that's what you're referring to.
Yeah.
But if they just, if they call that two-five-three-eighteen-hundred number and ask to, or let the folks know they want to sign up for National Night Out, they will get them to the person they need to talk to.
Okay.
Can I say one more? I was at the police station yesterday. They have, I didn't know they're doing cop school for kids. And it was really interesting. So they, they have two sessions. There's one in August and there's one now. There were only twelve men, I would like, or boys, I would have liked to see some women in there. But I thought that was so cute and that's, what a great thing. I mean, teaching them a lot of things and learning about what they do and so forth. I was, I was really excited to be there. It was, it was nice. So I didn't know we offered that. I think it's great. So that's good.
All right. Is that it?
Yes, sir.
Okay. We will now move to, I'll look for a motion to have enter closed session for the following items. Number one is discussion of the award of a public contract involving the expenditure of public funds and the discussion of the terms of scope or scope of such contract where discussion in an open session would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body pursuant to section two-point-two-three-seven-one-one eight-twenty-nine of the Code of Virginia and pertaining to the contract for the joint operation of schools between the county and the city of Williamsburg. And number two, consideration of personnel matter, the appointment of individuals to county boards and/or commissions pursuant to section two-point-two-three-seven-one-one eight-one of the Code of Virginia. And that's the appointments to the Virginia Peninsula Community College Board, appointments to the Historical Commission, and appointments to Stormwater Program Advisory Committee.
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion. Mr. Red Hammer, please call the roll. Mr. McGlynn?
Aye.
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Ms. Knoll?
Aye.
Ms. Eisenhour?
Aye. Okay, we're closed session. We'll let everybody clear the room while we get ready for the.